How about now? Good? Thank you. At seven oh four, I'll call the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. First item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. And would you like to name please?
I'm glad we didn't.
In this call. I don't have anything to add to the agenda, but there is going to be something we're going to ask that we postpone until the next meeting. Agenda item nine. B. Listed asset for disposal, make motion to postpone and nine B items listed for asset disposal. Till next meeting. Thank you, sir. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now. Okay, all meeting, all members of Board of Selectmen are present. We don't have minutes to approve at this point. Public participation, this is one of two opportunities for members of the public to address the Board of Selectmen. I'm first going to ask anybody in the room to identify yourself by name and address, state your business. And then I'll provide the same opportunity to anybody who's with us online. There'll be another opportunity later in the meeting to do the same. Is there anybody here present who would like to address the Board of Selectmen? I saw your hand first, then yours, then your items.
My name's Randy Clifton, Seven Hickory Trail, East Windsor, Connecticut. I'm here along with Don as a representative of our homeowners association. We were very disappointed that the senior center and community center vote failed by such a small margin. After discussing it with several people that we talked to, there was an awful lot of confusion about what was being asked. There was an awful lot of misinformation that was being generated. And we would like to ask if there's anything that can be done to resubmit this, to try to get this thing going back again, because I think the 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 community center is something that is drastically needed for this community.
Thank you, sir. You, sir, and then you, sir. Name and address. Yes. Don Buckley, Kings Court, Rod Brook, Connecticut. I have an issue here pertaining to last last meeting we had. And I know eight. Item nine D at the time would refer regarding prospect field road. The road acts actually was mentioned and talked about is actually prospect field drive. No, thank you for the question, common misconception, but we know we're talking about the right one. But can you approve that to be project field dry rather than road? Road is Route five, yes. So that's going to come back to the board with an actual for some further assessment of which of those road outlets we're looking to to convey. It'll be brought back, correct? Okay, and it's mentioned dry, because I grew up on that street. That's a little bit of a personal thing, you know what I mean? Okay. That's it. Thank you, sir. Yeah. You, sir, name and address, please.
Don Flat, Green Mountain, Mirdland, here in town. First of all, thank you for letting me make your comments. Again, there were three young women, myself, Randy Clifton, and Charlie Shanker went around and canvassed after we had disappointing. You know, finding of the it did not pass and it was kind of saddened for a lot of people. We did a lot of canvassing, there is ninety nine point nine percent positive. For those who want it, and I'm gonna, first of all, let me clarify. The community center slash senior center, it should not be just solely the senior center, it should be the community center, because everybody can use it as well as the seniors. So anyone who is used a president senior center realizes how inadequate it is. There's there's actually a safety issue. We were there two weeks ago. Almost watched a woman or actually a young man or elder man almost fall because of the, you know, the situation over there. It's because of just this location, Jason was there for his talk or his, you know, pop with the first one. And do it. People trying to play, we kind of play, we bowling, we golf. Yet they're out in the hall, but still, there's just too much, you know, it's it's just, to me, it's time to stop kicking that hand down the road. We need, we need a referendum, we need to develop the vote, but having said that, for those who are concerned about the cost. And I know there are, there's, you know, I don't want to sound one wants to use the property over here and ride and reserve a rope. Well, best case, let's get a finding, you see what's going to cost to do the same exact thing there. Versus what it's going to cost to put an addition on a present building that has the infrastructure, whether it's sewer, power, or electricity. I mean, water versus going through the whole procedure of infrastructure for a building that's not even built. So having said that, I ask that you come up with a referendum, another vote, so that we can get this done and to benefit the town of East London. And you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here in the room who would like to address the Board of Selectmen? Anyone else here in the room who would like to address the Board of Selectmen? Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anybody who's joined the meeting online who would like to address the board. If so, please unmute yourself, identify yourself by name and address, and state your business. Okay. There'll be another opportunity later in the meeting to address the board. We do have a town meeting at seven thirty, so we're going to try and in the interest of not being disrespectful to Deputy Chief Carl, we're going to try not to interrupt his presentation, so I'd like to take some stuff just to kind of clear the agenda. But in the meantime, let's let's move in the regular order and move to reappointments. Is there a motion to reappoint Mr. DiCaprio?
Move to reappoint Victor DiCaprio to the Veterans Commission as a regular member for a term expiring February first, twenty twenty seven.
Is there a second? Second. Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the reappointment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. On the reappointment of Mr. Robert Dynett to the Veterans Commission.
Move to reappoint Robert Dynett to the Veterans Commission as a regular member for a term expiring February first, twenty twenty seven.
Is there a second? Second. Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So carry. The reappointment of Mary Morgan is a member of Veterans Commission, is there a motion?
I'll move to reappoint Mary Morgan to the Veterans Commission as an alternate member for a term expiring February first, twenty twenty seven.
Second? Second, motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here is unanimous. On the reappointment of Gilbert Hayes as the town's representative on the Greater Hartford Transit District, is there a motion?
Move to reappoint Gilbert Hayes as a member of the Greater Hartford Transit District for a term expiring February first, twenty twenty seven.
Is there a second? Second. Motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. On to E. Okay, so last time I put in front of you a draft that updates the pound bid procedures. There were a couple of outstanding items, actually, I think there was just the one outstanding item, memory serves. That was the comparative to where other towns set their threshold for bids. Mr. Sauerhoffer did some research on, looks to be about fifteen towns. The town of Newtown, Connecticut, uses a bid threshold of fifty thousand dollars. The towns of Bristol, Trumbull, Simmsberry, Glastonbury, Kebrin, Avon, Southbury, Durham, and Meriden use a threshold of twenty five thousand dollars. The town of Brookfield, Beacon Falls, Weathersfield, and Norwalk uses a threshold of twenty thousand dollars. And the town of Berlin uses a threshold of ten thousand dollars. Most of the, it sounds like we are already right in the ballpark, so the recommendation from Joe was to leave it as it is and play it out. But there's the information you guys were requesting. Any other comments or feedback on that or on the policy?
That's where I was thinking, just leave it at twenty, I couldn't think of a reason why to change it.
The only reason I was thinking of was inflationary pressures, but that's transitory anyway. So. Any other comments on the policy at large? It's good. Charlie? Could I have a motion to approve?
Make the motion that we approved the bid procedures on dated January nineteen, twenty twenty three as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? So carry. I'd like to skip over nine A. But D, I don't, we can do D next, that's a good one. Okay, so can I have a motion to pick up agenda item nine D, please?
Make a motion to go out of order and pick up agenda item nine D.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So this is an annual grant that the town gets from the State Library. We use it for different types of things, in the past, we've used it for making certain records available electronically online. We've used it for the addition of certain records books or like weather resistant fireproofing of certain storage materials in the in the vaults. What the Town Clerk is asking us to consider this time is to utilize the fifty five hundred dollar grant from the State Library, which, again, we get every year. But she wants to add additional tracked racking in there, which will allow us to improve or increase our storage capacity without having to get a bigger room. So track racking is the, they'll basically put these racks four inches apart from each other, and they slide along a parallel so that you can actually access what's behind it. That's what she's trying to do with it. Something she's been working on for, for actually a while, we talked about using the Town Clerk fund funds to do it, but this seemed to be a more linear process, so. Any questions or comments on this?
They've been doing this a long time.
What's that?
They've been doing this for a long time, like, you know, a long.
That we've been getting the State Library grants?
Yeah.
Oh, this is longer than that.
Yeah.
And it's always the same amount, too, it's always fifty five hundred bucks.
I'll make a motion to authorize the first selectman to sign the historic document preservation program contract, grant contract for the targeted grant for fiscal year twenty twenty three cycle two grant four four seven dash SF dash point three.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I will sign that. Tax.
Move to a true of the tax refunds totaling one hundred eighty three dollars and seven cents.
Is there a second? Second. Motion needs to be made and seconded, any discussion?
Do we have to take that one degree?
No. Let's move on to Selectmen's reports, we can do that in ten minutes, and that should, that can round us out to the town meeting part, and then we'll go back in regular order for the deputy chief. So I'll lead off. So heating costs are obviously one of those drivers that are affecting every household right now, and it's affecting lower income households, particularly so. So the town is bringing back our Panther Plunge fundraiser, which benefits East Windsor Fuel Bank. That is where participants are quote unquote freezing for a reason to help raise money for the fuel bank by doing a polar plunge into the reservoir. That's going to be on February eighteenth at one o'clock. Prizes will be given out for the largest donation by team, by individual, for best costume. Proceeds will benefit the fuel bank, and I also want to make note, as I did in my call earlier today, that the town has been the recipient of a fifteen thousand dollar donation from the Rockville Bank Foundation. We're very appreciative of that fund, of those funds, which will also help offset heating costs in the community. We're looking for summer help for our Parks and Recreation Summer Camp Program. Those applications will be available on on February first online. It's a great summer job for college students or recent graduates that are looking to find a way to make some money and spend some time outside. So keep an eye out for that. The town recently passed our new elderly property tax credit program. The assessors office is now, will be accepting applications from February first through May fifteenth. Qualifying households will receive a tax credit of two hundred and fifty dollars on their July tax bill. This will mirror the state elderly homeowners program that follows the same enrollment schedule, and the assessors office has more information on that. After twenty years of services at the Town of East Windsor Senior Center, Teresa Hill has retired as of January sixth. I've known Teresa since I was about eight years old. And whether it was as a young student on the school bus that she drove, or as first selectman, she has always made sure that that you feel welcomed and comfortable and included in whatever she's doing. She's exactly the right personality for down there, and she's going to be missed, but we wish her the very best in her next chapter as she spends time with her husband Doug and her sons Chris and Brian. On January ninth, I met with a group of constituents to discuss the property revaluation process, and I'm going to be going to the Board of Education next week to do the same. Even though the recent revaluation will not be implemented, I thought it was still a good opportunity to share what the statutory requirements are, what the options were that we considered, and why we elected to do the deferment as we did. It was a great conversation and a great opportunity to answer questions that I think a lot of people probably had some some confusion about. And I'll do that anytime anybody wants to talk about that as a a legal process, you know, it's important that people understand as much as they can about it, and then learn how to become advocates for themselves as well. Over the last two weeks, the Finance Director and I have been meeting with departments, boards, commissions, and agencies about their respective budget requests for the next fiscal year. I'll have my recommendation for the town government ready, ready to be presented at the public hearing on February second in conjunction with Dr. Tudrun's budget recommendation of Board of Education. On January fourteenth, I was happy to welcome one of East Windsor's newest businesses, Two Sisters Nutrition Town. They are located right down in Kingsway Plaza, and Ribbon Cutting officially opening their business was this past Saturday. We wish them many years of good luck in our, in their business in our community, and their product is delicious. Later that same night, I was pleased to join the East Windsor Ambulance Association for their annual banquet. It was a great opportunity to thank our local EMS for the good service that they provide to our community day in and day out, especially throughout the COVID nineteen pandemic. And now that the holiday season is behind us, we've taken a look back on holiday programs that the town has sponsored. Largely due to the generosity of people in our community, the town was able to provide one hundred and sixty eight families with meals for Thanksgiving and additional two hundred and fifty two families with meals for Christmas. And that largely is done through private donations by people in the community to support their neighbors, and that is just a really tremendous show of support from our community that I think we all should be proud of. Right?
Yep, I don't have much, Police Commission meeting, unfortunately, I was unable to attend. But I'll give an update at next meeting, almost a minute already by myself. And the Housing Authority meeting that was scheduled for last night got canceled. But I have nothing there, but I do want to publicly thank the Broadbrook Fire Department and the East Windsor Ambulance Association and the Police Department for their timely responses and help over the last month, coming to my home three times. Without their expertise and their willingness to come back each and every time. My husband is finally on the road to recovery, so I just wanted to publicly say, I've always said that I stand behind when something is wrong, I'll stand behind when something is right. And our volunteers and our employees in this town that handle our emergency services are second to none. So I just publicly want to put that out there and thank each of you to be one of them for their help, and there's lots of them for me on those three occasions until the last one. And hopefully I won't have to have any of them ever come back. I do, I know that they'll be there with open arms, so again, I thank everyone publicly. That's all I have. Thank you.
Charlie?
Yes. So last Thursday, the PTO met at the Broadbrook Middle School. Some teachers came before the PTO to request help in providing incentives to entice kids to more regularly attend school. It was discussed that attendance amongst students is a big concern for school staff and administrators. The PTO also discussed and planned several upcoming events for the middle school and elementary school students coming up in the next couple of months. Last night, I attended the Board of Finance meeting. It was reported that the town is slightly behind in revenue collections compared to this same time last year, but is still in good shape. There was no need for any financial transfer in last night's meeting. But it was warned that the Town Social Services General Assistance Fund would have to receive yet another transfer this year to cover expenses for the people who are currently displaced and can't find comparable rent to the place from which they were forced to leave. The Board of Education reported to the Board of Finance that they had no significant changes since their last report. And First Selectman Bowles announced that he and the school superintendent would be giving their budget presentations on February second. Jason also announced and explained the recent four point seven million in project grants the town was awarded. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so my Diversity Council meeting was moved actually till next week, Broadbrook Fire Department budget workshop was canceled because they're done. What else was canceled? Pension was was canceled as well, so I did have the planning zone. They had their, I believe it was the fourth public hearing on the Scenic Event Barn, which I tallied up, it was about twelve hours of public input. They did close the public hearing, and it is on their agenda for this coming Tuesday. I imagine they'll take action barring some unforeseen other information that they might need. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Sarah?
Okay, the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting on January ninth was canceled. On January eleventh, I attended the Arts and Culture Committee meeting, the committee is still seeking members, there are currently three vacancies. So if anyone is interested, please fill out an application at the First Selectmen's Office. The committee was notified that their Connecticut Humanities Grant has been approved in the amount of five thousand one hundred dollars. The committee collaborated with Two Sisters Nutrition to feature a local artist at their grand opening, which was last Saturday. Artwork from East Windsor's own Kira Kaiser was displayed. The East Windsor Arts and Culture will be holding a photography contest, the contest is open to everyone, no matter their age, skill level, or residency. The categories are people, animals and wildlife, nature, East Windsor pride, photographer is twelve years of age or under, architecture and photographer's choice. The contest should launch any day now, and the expected deadline is April fifteenth. Please follow the Arts and Culture Facebook page for the contest rules and additional information. Later that evening, I attended the Board of Education meeting. The board received a joint presentation from Assistant Superintendent Daryl Ruliarde and Mrs. Fox and Mr. Ryan of Broadbrook Elementary School pertaining to the audit of the curriculum based on input from Dr. Rafferty. Modifications were made to the East Windsor Public Schools Literacy Block, assessments and data protocol, phonics instruction and intervention programming. This is a multi-year improvement approach over a four-year time period. The board established dates for their budget workshops and are working on finalizing the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school calendar, keeping in mind feedback from parents on when to hold April vacation, although that might be difficult because surrounding towns seem to be split between two different weeks. The Veterans Commission meeting on January twelfth was canceled, however, they are still accepting orders for the Veterans Memorial Walkway Paver Drive. The pavers are six by nine and are engraved in memory of a loved one to be displayed at the Joseph Tracy Memorial Green. The cost is fifty dollars each and orders will be accepted through February first. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Good.
I just have a quick question. No disrespect, Sarah, but there was a big discussion at the Board of Ed meeting that you have not covered in your minutes that I think it's noteworthy. There was a policy in place regarding people that have a position on board on in the hiring of family members through the school system. Board of Ed on their last meeting, according to the minutes I read, they decided after the fact to cancel all that policy. I'm not sure if that's legal. But I'm going to do some research, but if nothing else, I believe it's unethical. If you have a policy in place, how do you expect a student to be Switzer in the family's policies when after the fact, when a policy surfaced that wasn't followed, you just say, hey, never mind, it's acceptable. I have a problem with that, and I think once it gets out there, the minutes are out there in writing, even though the video isn't. There'll be some concern for the public in general, so I just throw that out there, if you haven't read the minutes to the Board of Ed, you might want to do that. And I'm just, I'm just taken aback by it personally, I as an individual, and because it wasn't in the minutes, I just want to throw it out there. If you're going to scrutinize, you need to start scrutinize everything and tell them that's happening. As we're scrutinized and learn from our mistakes moving forward, I would at least hope that public would do the same thing to the Board of Ed and ask them to follow their policies. And if after the fact you have to change policies, change it without violating them.
So it's seven thirty, I'd like to ask a motion to recess the meeting of the Board of Selectmen. For a second. Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor of recess, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are recessed from the Selectmen's meeting at seven thirty. And now I'd call the meeting, the special town meeting to order, Madam Clerk, you want to come up? It's seven thirty, the special town meeting has been called ordered, our first item of business is an election of a moderator here for their nominations.
I'm nominated. Hi, I'm a moderator, Sarah Muska, twenty five, May Blavie.
Is there a second? Motion are made and seconded. Are there other nominations?
Move to reclose.
Motion has been made to close nominations, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tom Palomini, a motion has been made and seconded to close nominations on the motion proposed, is there discussion? Is there discussion? Is there discussion? All in favor of opposing nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All in favor of Jason Bowles as moderator of the town meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please read the public notice?
Town of East Windsor Public Town Meeting Notice. The legal voters of the Town of East Windsor are hereby warned that a town meeting will be held via Zoom in the John Daly Junior Meeting Room, Town Hall, eleven Rice Street, Broadbrook. On January nineteenth, two thousand twenty three, at seven thirty PM for the following. One, to consider and discuss an additional appropriation in the sum of four hundred thousand from the town's unassigned general fund balance for engineering work on the HVAC systems for the three East Windsor schools. Stated that East Windsor, Connecticut, this thirteenth day of January, two thousand twenty three. East Windsor Board of Selectmen, Jason E. Bowles, First Selectman, Marie De Souza, Deputy Selectman, Sarah Muska, Selectman, Ellen Baker, Selectman, Charlie Norrell, Selectman.
Thank you. So here's the eligibility to vote, anyone who qualifies under these conditions is eligible to vote in tonight's town meeting. At any town meeting, this is section seven dash six of the Connecticut General Statutes. At any town meeting other than a regular or special town election, or at any meeting of any fire, sewer, or school district, or any other municipal subdivision of any town incorporated by any special act. Any person who is an elector of such a town may vote, and any citizen of the United States over the age of eighteen years or more who jointly or separately is liable to the town, district, or subdivision for taxes assessed against him on an assessment of not less than one thousand dollars on the last completed grant list of such town, district, or subdivision, or who would be so liable if not entitled to an exemption under Connecticut General Statutes, subdivision seventeen, nineteen, twenty two, twenty three, twenty five, or twenty six of section twelve dash eighty one may vote unless restricted by any provisions of any special act relating to such town, district, or subdivision. There is bye. There is by. Sounds like a lawyer wrote that. Yes. Okay, who has item number one? Yes, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Sarah Muska, twenty-five Maple Avenue, item number one. To consider and discuss an additional appropriation in the sum of four hundred thousand dollars from the town's unassigned. General Fund Balance for Engineering Work on the HVAC Systems for the three East Windsor Schools. I move the foregoing resolution to be adopted.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second, Tom Platt.
Motion has been made. Any discussion on the resolution? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I just want to say that I think the expenditure is appropriate for what needs to be done in the school. In order for us to have everything available and the grant coming out. And I say that publicly just because there's been a lot of questions and concern about bid processes in town. And why and how much money is being spent on engineering stuff. And we use the Scott Hall as an example. It's because you have to, and this is another example of why you have to be ready when the grant money is available. So I would encourage everyone to vote in the Hall affirmative for it.
Roll over, thank you. Thank you, madam. Is there any further discussion from anyone in the room? Would anyone online like to address the question before the town meeting? If so, please unmute yourself, state your name and your address, and state your business. Seeing none, I'll first call for ayes and nays in the room, and then I'll do the same online. All those in favor of the resolution in the room, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Folks who have joined us online, all in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. Resolution clearly passes. With no further business to go before the town meeting, a motion to adjourn would be in. Is there a motion? Motion has been made by Rick LaBoreas, seconded by Sarah Muska. It's non-debatable. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. We are adjourned at seven thirty-six. Now that I call the regular meeting, we're selecting back to order. We'll resume regular order and take up agenda item nine A. That means Chief Carl, the Floragers. Two, actually. What is driving the, first of all, Mr. Sher, can I put my water on here?
Drinking it.
So is it your computer that's going on?
It can be. It can be either one.
I did not do anything with audio, so we don't have to worry about that. Oh, yeah, I don't know where that, right, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate you guys that were patient with me. Thank you. I'm as surprised as anyone. All right, is that it?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's see if this is going to work. All right, you might have to advance. All right, well, first of all, thank you for allowing me to speak. I have some acknowledges. First off. I have brought with me Cheryl Gossisansh, she's the East Windsor. Town Schools State Finance and Equity Coordinator. I also have my boss and chief Roger Hart, and then Cheryl brought Pat Tugger in the superintendent, because why not bring pressure, right? No problem there, right? So other than that, Cheryl's going to talk to me. She's going to rehabilitate. She's been in this youth service role longer. Attached to it longer than I have. But to put you guys at ease, I'm going to start by saying thank you, but I, this is a unique situation. I think most people that stand before you probably have a problem in any way. If you guys, I'll tell you upfront, this is the day you mop or any English people in here, that's the end of the story. I'm going to give you the end of the story first. I'm not asking for money. We have money, but we have a problem. So if you can relax and accept the fact that this is not a money grab, there's many important members here. So let's have a little fun. So with that. I wanted to say and introduce what I am not. I am not a, this is a presentation on the user, if you can see that. I'm not a Youth Service Bureau Director. I am not a soldier worker. I'm not an expert in mental health programming. And certainly thus far, I'm not a computer expert or a power plant pro. We're not going to see flashing lights and curtains like sometimes you guys are usually. So I'm a police officer. I've been in town for twenty-six and a half years. I'm an investigator and now police administrator, fortunate enough to be administrator. And along that LA, I was a community police officer. I ran a JR P for a while. And I was a juvenile officer, and I thought, Derek, I'm not going to lecture you and I'm not going to preach to you. I'm going to tell you what I believe and what I know. And that's where we're going to start. So if you can leave that, we'll get you going. First off, I guess we have to say, there's an intro. If you could, if you could advance the next slide, I was hoping that this was going to work, and I don't know why it's not. So again, I have to go back to my eyes. I made these spot big enough thinking that I'd be okay with it, so I might have to leave this podium and go forward. Feel like a caged animal behind here. So Youth Service Bureau, it's a regulation. It's Connecticut General Statutes ten dash nineteen M. You can see up there, what is the Youth Service Bureau? I don't know this. Most people might not know what it is, right? So I didn't have a full understanding when this came to my attention seven months ago. What a Youth Service Bureau would make. So it's, it's a govern, governed by statute. And you can see in there, there's individual counseling. There's some parenting training, workplace, and some alternative special education opportunities. Cheryl can speak more to this when she comes up here, because she's a wealth of knowledge. It's gracious enough to come here and help me out. Along the way. So that's basically what a Youth Service Bureau is and the laws, and it's regulated by Connecticut General Statutes. Jason, can you go to the next slide? East Windsor History of the Youth Service Bureau. I had, in this process, many people helped me get to where I am today. I'll give you a quick rundown. We applied for it about six years ago. This is information that came from Melissa. It was something that she had to go to the legislation before I get permission to open up, basically establish a Youth Service Bureau. A couple of years ago, the police department had folded it, tried to fold it under the mental health team. And if you guys remember when we were having conversations about that. And see if we could get it work. It's a, it's a program that's funded by now DCF, then the Department of Education. It's got a yearly budget and there's some data collection that comes with it. It's a social service program that was run under Melissa, and then, like I said, we grabbed it a couple of years ago. DCF funded yearly, and there's other available funds and accounts that are our sources, and it's from DMS. Amplify and some regional behavioral action organizations. So just a quick history, we grabbed it a few years ago with the police department. We tried to work it into mental health. In June of this last year, two thousand twenty-two, I was up in Boston in training, and I got a couple of emails from Melissa saying, hey. It's time to report your data and a few other things. I didn't really know what she was talking about. I said, okay, no problem. I took a few classes in July, August, September, October, November, December. Trying to figure out what this program actually really was. There's several people that I have to say that helped me along the way. First of all, Amy helped me tremendously. Amy O'Toole helped me tremendously with the budgeting process, visitor budgeting with this. Melissa helped me understand where it came from and what we were going, because it's important. So, you know, where are we, where did we come from? What are we doing now and where are we going? You'll see that in this presentation. Cheryl was hired this year. She reached out to me. I basically exposed the fact that I didn't know anything about it too much. She's helped me tremendously along the way. So, and my chief has allowed me to work on this program. This is not my world. This is a social service world. I come from a different background, so it's a little tough for me to understand. I also went around the state to whoever would listen from Youth Service Directors and, and ask them for some advice to see if I could learn about this. Acupatinal Hazard, I've been a cop for twenty-six and a half years, so when I was questioning them and I want information, it basically turns into an interrogation. I think some of them felt that way. I'm not really sure, but it's, it's happened. I know I do it because my kids tell me when their friends come over, dad, dad, dad. So anyways, I know at least one director said, yes, you're interrogating me, but all is well, we're still friends. Melissa, I got to take a minute and acknowledge Melissa. I, because I had to step, this program had me step into her world. There's not enough I can say about her staff and her program. You gave it not to the public safety side. Melissa is just unbelievable, and her staff was unbelievable, and the time she spent with me and what she has done. And what she does for this town with all the hats that she wears is just tremendous. And so I stopped praying for her and staff, and I start praying to them because they're saints, right? So that's what I'll say. This town is lucky to have her and that staff running this program. And I stepping into her world did not realize how difficult all of this stuff can be. So with that being said, I wanted to get the acknowledgements out of the way. And then Amy, she helped me with the financing. We had some issues with the Youth Service Bureau the last couple of years. We had funding that came in, and we had to rehabilitate that through some turbulence. Some employees coming in and out of the service here and stuff like that. So we really didn't run the program. Properly for the last couple of years, and we had to return some money. Amy was able to work with me to get that done, and I can say that we fixed that. We did our data collection. And today, the state of Connecticut had sent us a letter saying that they've accepted our Youth Service Bureau to go forward in the future, and we're good to go. I just got that letter today. Awesome. And I printed it and brought it just in case you thought I was lying. So we were, they were able to fix it, and I cannot take credit for all of that, but that's where we are today. So that's a little bit history about where, where we were and how we got to where we got to. And what I'm going to be asking moving forward. So if you could hit the next slide. There's two functions to the YSB. There's an administrative core function, and you can see that that's an administration research. Resource development, community outreach, and advocacy. That's what I've been learning how to do the last seven months. And reaching out. It's a lot of the administration and pushing. It's the data collection. Bring it, print it back, send it to the DCF, getting the approval for the funding and things like that. With the YSB, I talked about there's other streams of funding that are out there through these organizations. They, once they got my name as the head over here, I couldn't believe the amount of organizations that were reaching out saying, hey, there's money for safe driving. There's money for teen smoking. There's money for drinking and driving. And those types of fundings, and I would call Melissa, and she's like, yeah, it's free fun. It's free money. It's free money. It's free money. But it requires somebody to actually do some paperwork and push forward. Renee, our administrative, the chief's administrative assistant, she's been gracious enough to fill out some of the paperwork for me. And so there are streams of money that are there. The other thing is, is for the last several years that we, we have been doing the Youth Service or trying to do the Youth Service Bureau. We have been matching, the town has been matching funds because we're required to, and those matching funds are sitting in an account that Amy can speak more to. But that's where I say that there's streams of money. We get funding every year from DCF. We get other organizations that send money out. And then we also have our matching for four or five years that's in an account there. So what we, what I am not, and what I cannot do is the bottom part, the direct services functions. These are people or individuals that will work with the youth, potential have contact with the juvenile justice system. The diversionary programs, the ones that work with the, the basically the schools. Behavioral issues with the students and community outreach programs. And I don't want to sit here and read the slides, partially because I can't read them from here, but entirely. But you can see them if you can, and, and, you know, there's, there's much more to the program than just. The administrative side. It's the direct services side. That's the difficult ask here. So if you can go to the next slide. Some of the range of services, there's youth development, juvenile justice, family involvement. The justice, the juvenile justice side is the component of the police. And so if you can look at this program as we need somebody that is going to run the Youth Service Bureau, the Youth Service Bureau and program. And they're going to have an advisory. Most of the communities around us have advisors. Board that they meet, and those advisors are the local leaders, community members. A component of the police department, because there is some diversionary programs with some of the juvenile issues and some of the things that we have. Cheryl can speak to some of the issues at the school scene. And how that's going to develop out and what we're, what we're basically missing. There's some family outreach. There's a program out there that we could purchase. Most towns are financing Sessin. It's in Cheryl's slide presentation. I don't know if she's going to speak to it, but I'm going to steal a little bit of her thunder. It's at-home parenting, and it's an online program that covers a vast array of things from diapers. To financing, to any issues you have, bullying, and all the things that you have, how you pop your teens and your children. It's a cost program, but most of the Youth Service bureaus bundle their community into a fixed cost. That's paid for. It's an online thing, and most people will know that crises don't happen Monday through Friday, eight to four, when there's available. They're happening at ten o'clock at night, at lunch, dinner, you know, things on the weekends, holidays, whenever. And you could have services. There's live services. There's libraries of recorded things that you can jump into in classes you can take. There's help groups that you actually can sign up for. It seems to be a tremendous program. I looked at it a little bit. For what my limited knowledge was from the recommendations of the Youth Service bureaus around here, and it's a fantastic program. And we're missing something like, so that's to speak to some of those important things, youth development. You know, I can't say enough that early intervention is a key to grabbing some and averting some of these issues. Could you grab the next slide? Mental health services. We, this was the component that we tried to pull it in on the police department side. We do have a program up and running now. I can say that it's much, it's much more successful than, than when we first started off and trying to do the youth services. But our social worker doesn't deal with the youth. As, as a regular point of our business. There's childcare, there's teen pregnancy prevention, and the community outreach. Some of the activities that, again, I'll let Cheryl speak to when it comes to that. And I think, can you go to the next slide? All right, so this is the point where I'm going to pass it off to Cheryl to come up and explain to you some of the things that she can do. She can rehabilitate my ramblings. And hopefully get you guys a better idea of what we're doing.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight and to share my experience with you. I am, again, new to the East Windsor School District. I come with experience as a former administrator, assistant principal. School Safety Coordinator, so I really could not have done my job as efficiently as I did. Without the support of the Youth Services Bureau in the town that I work with. It really truly was a vital partnership. That was in support of our students in the town I was coming from. They provide universal supports to students, character development to students and to families. And as well as a tiered approach to higher levels of need. So we have universal tier one approaches. As I mentioned up here, we have anti-bullying programs that we've implemented that they have funded. In my past school, we used the Sandy Hook Promise, that was the Hello Week. We have implemented Rachel's Challenge, and most recently, we had brought some assemblies into school. Specifically at targeting bullying and positive character development. There are internet safety programs, Scott Driscoll Internet Solutions. He comes to various schools in the, in the area and has presented. We're working with the Dare Officer for the State Police this year at East Windsor to bring programming to our schools. We're working with the Dare Officer for the State Police this year at East Windsor to bring programming to our schools. Um, there are safety training programs in the local towns, babysitting programs that students can enroll in. And these are all sponsored or subsidized in part by the Youth Services Bureau. So we're providing universal, instruction on character development, providing students and, and children with skills to be successful. I also wanna mention substance abuse prevention. There are numerous programs to combat substance abuse, vaping, um, drug use, um alcohol, drinking and driving. Um, but we have been, I've been working with our school S R O and talking about implementing a safe grad, program for graduation. We're just in, in the initial talks of it, but that'll be something that the Youth Services Bureau could support. A safe grad night is an all-night party for our graduates. It's one last night of unity as a class to come together. They do these um celebrations at local amusement parks. In my past district, we've done about Sunny's Place. We've done Quasi Amusement Park. But it really is a nice opportunity for students to come together and to be safe um on graduation night. These are just a few examples of universal programs. I have to say that no two youth service bureaus look alike. Um, they offer a range of programs, but really at the core is providing tiered levels of supports to families and students, and children in the community um in, in different areas of development. On my next slide, I will speak to um more specifically where I have really drilled down and worked with the Youth Services Bureau in my past role. My first experience with the Youth Services Bureau was to support student attendance. This is a function that youth services bureaus all over the state, are highly connected to schools with. Um, because over the past few years, we have obviously with COVID nineteen have seen an, an uptick in, chronic absenteeism statewide. And unfortunately, uh, East Windsor is not an exception to that rule. So I do want, um Deputy Chief Carl has asked me to speak to the need. Um, as far as attendance goes statewide, we're looking at a four-year span. We're in the fourth year of this pandemic. In twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, the state chronic absenteeism rate was twelve point two percent. That, that, that was the year that we went into the pandemic. The next year, which was our year when many schools were hybrid in, in person, out of person. Naturally, with the concerns about COVID, um, the, the absenteeism rates rose to nineteen percent. Then we came back to school last year. There's still heightened sense of concern about COVID illness, and not knowing when to stay home and when to come to school. Um, so last year's rate of chronic absenteeism, again statewide, was twenty, rose to twenty-three point seven percent. And this year, chronic absenteeism for the state of Connecticut. And chronic absenteeism means that a student is absent ten percent of the days of their enrollment. So in a one hundred and eighty-day school year, they must be absent eighteen days of a school year to be considered chronically absent. This year, um, we are not completed with a school year, but the state really does scrutinize every school district's attendance, data very carefully. And they are reporting out on data for the state currently as of actually November of twenty twenty-two. This year, we would have assumed that the levels would have started to drop. They've actually continued to climb for the state. We are at twenty-five point four percent chronic absenteeism in the state of Connecticut. Um, according to EdSite, which is the state reporting platform for uh, um, data. And this is not East Windsor percent. This is the state of Connecticut. Um, so as you can tell, we are in need of support as far as supporting our students' attendance and our families in attendance. We have families who are struggling to get their children to school. Sometimes it's because of student avoidance, the school, school phobia. And sometimes it could be that the parent is having difficulty or not meeting their requirement to get the students, um, into school. And we do have protocols that we follow in every school district, including East Windsor, to follow up, to communicate with families, to conduct home visits. But in my past experience, I utilized the Youth Services Bureau to provide an extra buffer of support, to um families and students to really address and drill down on the concerns that are, impeding that students' attendance in school. So really that youth service, when, whenever we have concerns with attendance, um, if a school finds that they're at a point where they need to involve the Department of Children and Families, when we contact them to support students, or to refer them for, for, for services, um, every single time the D C F caseworker will ask, have you utilized youth services? Have you followed that protocol yet? So we don't have that in place right now. They do ask us. We do our due diligence. We conduct home visits in district. But it would be very beneficial to have that program in place to provide support to families and students. It really entails um working with a social worker, again drilling down on the concerns that that family or student has regarding school attendance. Finding out what the root cause is for the absenteeism. And that caseworker from the Youth Services Bureau works with that student and that family to identify the concerns, and, and be able to address it. And sometimes students will tell the Youth Services caseworker, um, information that they might not feel comfortable telling the school employee. So it's, we do work in concert with each other, to support student attendance. And I have had really good results in collaboration with youth services. I don't, I don't know how I could have done my job without them in my past experience. Um, there are other programs that I would like to speak to, but really the attendance piece was key for me. Um, the Safe Dates Program is a program that, neighboring towns have used to educate families and students on healthy relationships. Um, and we also have restorative justice, um noted here, that the Juvenile Review Board, is an organization that falls under the umbrella of the Youth Services Bureau that in my past experience, I have utilized to support students who might have made the wrong choice here and there, but instead of, being punitive, it's more educational and rehabilitative. Um, and then finally, I, I mentioned mental health first aid. It's a program that I participated in through youth services. I participated in the training for men's, youth mental health first aid as a person who works with young people. This is a really dynamic program and, and as a youth service bureau, we would have the ability to have our Director of Youth Services be trained as a trainer in mental health first aid. And that would be a really great resource for the town that they could hold, um, training sessions for parents, for school employees. They could potentially in the future, hold training sessions in concert with the days that we have professional development days. Um, and even I attended on a weekend as a parent. So, um, there are so many opportunities and it is really a great program to identify, mental health concerns that students might be exhibiting, what the warning signs are, and how to address those mental health concerns when you have identified them. It's really a powerful program and I, I have mentioned to Deputy Chief Carl that I think it'd be valuable to implement here. So one more slide. And again, no two Y S Bs look the same. There are so many more programs in place. So, uh, you spoke to Peace at Home. Um, the town that I live in does use Peace at Home. It's a curated platform of resources for parents, anywhere from potty training, to the school avoidance piece, to um figuring out how to get financially for college. It runs the gamut. There's live and on-demand support. Um, Educating Parents, Hidden in Plain Sight is a program that I have been involved in. Um, it is a drug abuse prevention program meant for parents to attend. Um, it is basically a mock-up of a bedroom. There are support search people that come, that walk through with you, explain what you're seeing in, in a child's mock-up bedroom and how to identify things that are, harmful things like drugs, vapes, um, alcohol signs that a student, a child might be using. Um, so children are actually, students not allowed to go to those presentations just because it is just meant for the adults. Um, and then finally, um, uh, uh, internet safety programming for families. We are actually gonna be implementing internet safety programming um coming in the end of March for parents as well. Again, we're gonna do that through the Dare Officer from State of Connecticut Police. And I just put a little, um, like there are play groups that are implemented through, um, the Youth Services Bureau, mommy and me programs and such. So we run the gamut as far as ages that are, are addressed. Okay, one more slide. Try to again pack in so many different things. And finally, community outreach. In my past district, we ran a exhibition game with the Harlem Wizards. It actually, it was, it was supported through the Youth Services Bureau to get it up and running. And we ended up um bringing them in for a um benefit to raise money for the school. So it was really great community outreach. We had, Pat, Jim, um, and um, we, some local, um, Y S Bs operate community days at like the yard goats, like East Windsor Day at the yard goats. And that can be sponsored by or subsidized through a youth services program. Block parties for families, community parties for families, just to bring the, the community together. And community service coordination can be done through the Youth Services Bureau. So if you have a requirement through the J R B that a student, uh, or a young person, complete community service that can be coordinated through a Y S B. And then finally, I put Family Paint Nights as an example. There are all sorts of different workshops that you can, the coordinator can, put together for families, paint nights, cooking classes, dance workshops, you name it, yoga classes, that bring the families and communities together. And again, no Y S B looks the same, but really the core tenant for me is the attendance piece. And the mental health piece, because as I mentioned, the statistics and the data on attendance, the same type of alarming data, as you may well know, um, is, is regarding mental health as well. During the pandemic, they, CDC had cited that about a third of high school students had reported, serious mental health concerns during the pandemic. So, and as you may also know, there, there is a backlog, as far as access in the state for mental health services for teens. So, just really important stuff and I appreciate your time.
What, what district do you come from?
Summers.
And is that where you live?
I live in Southfield. I have participated in youth services programs, um, through other towns though. So I work most, most closely through the attendance piece with my town. Did the community service piece with the town that I worked in, but the peace at home parenting is through Southfield. Um, the first aid programs that I've been involved in have been through Southfield. And actually the mental health first aid program, I, I've worked on that in tandem with the Brandby's Youth Services Bureau. So there are so many different opportunities that youth service bureaus uh provide to the community.
Alright, so you can see why I brought her, right? Super generous, generous, so uh, I could not have said any of that. And again, like I said, I come from the law enforcement world and she, she comes from this type of world and what, what we need and everything that she just illustrated was fantastic. Um, so if we go to the next slide. Alright, so the benefits, we, we basically looked at this as youth service benefits and she talked a little bit about it. They're the leading local prevention agency. Uh, mobilizing in their communities, provide ongoing assessments and, and offer opportunities for the youth uh involvement. And I'm, I'm glad that she highlighted something I didn't think about. No youth service bureau is the same. Uh, we're, we're not gonna be the same as South Windsor. South Windsor's not the same as West Hartford. You know, no community police is the same. Nothing is ever the same. It's about what the community needs, um, and what, what we're shaping up and what we're missing. Um, so if you could, uh, Jason, move to the next slide.
One second please.
Yeah, no problem. No, that's okay. So, um, what are some of the East Windsor benefits? Okay, so what do we have for our own benefits? I don't walk around a little bit here, but this is the part I wanna plug up. So we have existing funding, alright? So the Department of Children and Family sends money to us every year as long as we fill out, uh, our data collection and the things that we're supposed to do. We have matching funds that come into that to speak to all the programs that, uh, Cheryl has uh just spoken about. I've agreed in, in a sense to keep the lights on and pay the bills and she's agreed to do the programs. Because in seven months of my research, I couldn't even come close to even knowing what was out there. I'm trying to learn the language and they're running the programs. And so how we got there is if you, if you remember, we had an officer that did a lot of these things, Officer Tamara Stepien. She went on to other, um, types of things to do in her life, but she left law enforcement. That's where we initially were looking for the funding, and started that. And then we, I ended up supervising, um, Officer Stepien at the time. And then when it came time to report and fix this program, Melissa identified me as the one that needed to do it. And, and as you could tell, I've been struggling, right? So, I'll admit, I'll admit my shortcomings. I wish I was talking about a crime scene or something. I'd be like, alright, no problem. But anyways, so we have existing funding. We can show the need in the community. I think that, uh, you know, sure, we didn't speak specifically to East Windsor numbers. And you know, we're not, I don't think it's appropriate to do that, but there's, there is a gap and there is an issue. We're not unlike any common state. Um, we are unique in some ways, but there is some need and some issues that, that, that we need to address. The school programs she talked about in the Juvenile Review, Re- Review Board. I used to, I didn't really run it, but it was a law enforcement liaison. I picked it up from Lieutenant Poliquin who's still with us. And it was run by Betsy Burns back in the day. And so we, we have a policy in place to run the J, the J R B. We have uh the structure of it, but we don't have anybody to run it from a Youth Service Bureau side. The interesting thing that we're, and some of the complex things we're having now is that the ju-, the juvenile court system has changed tremendously over the last few years. Um, the way that they handle their cases when we submit to them. They have a two-tiered system now that took over, they, they implemented January first of this year. And so if we send juvenile cases over there, they go through a screening process. If they, before they used to keep it because we didn't have a J R B. We have an agreements with Enfield that if a, a child from Enfield and lives in Enfield has a problem, we can use their J R B. So we have agreements in, in area towns to send kids that are residents of their towns that are J R B. But we don't have an answer for ours. Well, the court system is kicking those back now. There, there, we don't have any place. They're not taking them. They're gonna kick those certain tiered ones back to the community for a community diversion program. Most of them are J R Bs. We don't have one currently up and running. And there's a little bit of work we'd have to do on that. So this is a problem that we, we have to address. It's coming our way. And then there's the community outreach, which she talked about. Um, if you can take it to the next slide. Here are all of our challenges. Staffing. So, I've agreed and my chief has allowed me to pay the bills. Renee's helping us do that. We're, we're, we're doing what we can do as far as my, my education every day. I'm learning something new. And then thank God, head Cheryl has agreed to work some of her programs. She seemed to be excited about sp- spending some of our money because the last couple of years, the last couple of years, we were sending back, we sent back to the state of Connecticut. Amy could give you the figures, but it, it was over the sixty thousand dollars that we returned back to the state. That we left on the table for programs that we, we weren't able to do. Um, and you know, I, I just think that's a shame. When I first got tied up with this, I was trying to figure out, do you, do you, do you do, do you find a director? Was I gonna be the director or figure, try to figure out what was going on there? And you do the director, you have to have an advisory board and you have to have locations. Alright, so, it, it, it came basically in, in my research, I figured out that you have to have somebody in place before you start, having advisory boards and things like that. You could put that stuff together. Usually the advisory board is somebody in these other towns that were local leaders. A member of a department, it's like a police department member, a member of board of ed, a member of the, the school district. Uh, the S R Os are usually at, at some point involved because it's, it's a collaboration of all the issues that happen, social workers that deal with mental health. They put that together and they meet, you know, once, uh, one of the communities only meets once every uh two months. And they just research or, or they talk about the direction that they're going in. It's not, it's not any heavy lifting. And the employees do the work. Um, you have to have a location. Location needs to be recognizable, friendly, easy access. They have community pain centers. They have community centers, these locations. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna stand up there and preach about what we need in this town. We need a community center, play, play it simple. I'm with these guys. Right? We need a community center. Community center is gonna, gonna give you a location, multiple locations to run different types of programs. They have programming with kids that wanna learn how to lift weights. They have programming that, Manchester has a great program out there that the kids, they join up with the police department, they go and play laser tag. And they take on the police and laser tag and all these things that you're reading about that we're missing. And so location, you know, I, I heard through some of the chatter, because I'm out in the town too, and I talk to people about what things went, didn't, didn't go or how that happened. And one of the things was, is we're, we're using building office space. No, we're building space. Yes, we need office space because nobody has any space, but we have no ability to bring a pool table, a ping pong table into a room, have four or five kids that are interested and come have a conversation. We have that. That's what all these other teen centers have. And we desperately need. That's what we desperately need. And that's just where we are. So, if you can go to the next slide, I think we're basically done here. So in closing, right, in closing, um, I'd like to say a couple things. First of all, I'd like to tell you that we can afford this program. I'd like to say that, um, you could get a full-time off, a full-time officer, right? A full-time person that they could be in a clerical unit and they could work under Melissa, but then I'd be preaching to you. I'd be lecturing you. I told you I was gonna do that. Remember in the beginning, I told you I was gonna do that. You might be able to afford this program. Amy could speak more to that, but there is money and there's funding every year and for a while, you you could you could do a full-time position, I say full-time. My main cheek is that I I'm not prepared to speak to a job study, but I. There, you mentioned out there about salary range for youth service bureau directors, for people that are working in this and it's. It's well within the range of the money that we have for a little while. And then ultimately, you'd have to pick up the benefits and things like that, but there is a solution and there is money there. Um. So. I would also like to say that. We early, the the data shows that in any of these children, and I'm going to speak to the criminology side of things, and then there's programming and some other stuff. The data overwhelmingly shows that early intervention in the youth and the families. Is a huge factor in positive outcomes, right, everybody hears things like Yale or jail, and that's two. Full extremes, but it's not far off when you start to break down what what our community needs. Uh, there are youth and there's families out in our community that are struggling, and they definitely need that, they definitely need these types of things, so. Um, if you can believe that. This is risk management and moving forward and we're just identifying those people that are in need and bringing them someplace and having conversations with all of these leaders, whether it's mental health, whether it's. Police-related ones or the diversionary program, um. The. In my experience. I'd have to say. That. The people in the community. That need us the most, trust us the least. By and so. This captures those people. If anybody has any questions.
You're open to a couple of questions?
Absolutely, I love questions, so so first I'll I'll ask members of the board, and then if you're comfortable, oh, open it up. I got Cheryl.
I think I heard you saying um that we do have a structure for JRB, but we don't have an actual CD in JRB.
Right, we have a policy, the police department has a policy for JRB, we'd have to update it a little bit, but it's not heavily lifted. The JRB, how it ran before was that um, the police officers obviously make an arrest. Um, it's a juvenile diversion program, uh, we work with the courts. Uh, that arrest would go to. Uh, the coordinator at the time, it was Betsy Burns, that was her soul. She had community members uh in the community, four or five, a probation officer, a DCF worker, and we would meet once a month. We review the cases and go through them, there had to be cooperation from the family and and also the child had to recognize it, it wasn't, we weren't the fact finders, they hadn't agreed that it was an issue. So for example, say, one of the kids stole a CD in school. He did, the CD, so then there's identified, the student is identified, we bring them in, we talk to the parents, the parents got to agree, child understands there's. An issue there and there's some restitution made to that, but it could be an apology, it could be a letter, that were programs we were doing back in the day. Um, it requires that you meet with the student and the parent and there's an education part of that, and you need community members and you need folks in there that do that. The police didn't run that program, because again, much like the YSB. This is not a police, you don't want the police to be the front of this issue, right, this is a community issue. And so the police were really only, when I did it and Lieutenant Pollock did it, we were only the ones that were following through. So if a child was given or a parent was given an assignment, we would follow through with some of those, make sure those things happen, bring the child back. Have conversations with, you know, how's it going, what are you doing, things like that, to make sure that it was followed through. There were safeguards in there that if they just totally fell apart, we could refer them back to the court. I believe some of those safeguards are gone now, it's really, this is your program. We also are not talking about serious juvenile offenses, right, so we make arrests and serious juvenile offenses, there's a set of offenses that are are absolutely required to go to court. Because again, they're not putting stabbings, you know, sexual assaults and things like that on JRBS, right, so there's still the juvenile justice system. It's just that most of those crimes that the kids are committing in our community, the other communities that are at lower level, they need to go to these diversion programs. And that's what we were doing for, we haven't had a JRB in quite a while.
Um, and I'm not sure if this is a question for you or for Cheryl, but but uh, the dare program was mentioned several times. We don't have a local dare program anymore, right?
No, we we used to have a dare program, again, I'm going to date myself way back in the day, because I go places and there's whole adults with families, like, you were my dare officer, and I was like, holy smokes. But the dare program, we have not done in a while, it was bad, several years ago, we were under like some dare number one, it was a dare number two. The state police stayed with the dare program, there are some communities like Martin that still has it. Uh, there's a state trooper now that does it, uh, Trevor White, Trevor White, he um. You know, he's gracious enough to work with the school and fill a gap that the East Windsor police does not have, we have an SRO. Our our SRO is currently not working, she's not returning it. And so, and this this is a program that's the diversion gap.
You guys have had a run of really good SROs come through um the PD, I'm going back at least six of them, really good.
So and and you know, the the issue with the really good SRO is that they're really good at other things and they move on, so. They and I, they stay within the agency, but they've gone on a bit.
So what should the nexus be between the SRO and the Youth Service Bureau? Is there a relationship there and so what is that relationship?
There is, so you know, Cheryl might be able to speak to, uh, Summers had a fantastic SRO, um, and she had a great rapport. And I think that that also came in from her experiences at as administrator in a school district. So. In the YSBs that are in the community, the SRO is a component of that, so. Um, the the SRO program is not the lack of kids in the school, right, it's the bridge gap for those things, so again, if the YSB is. All of these things and one component of that is is policing. Then the SRO is is a function of that to be part of either the advisor, the programs and the things like that, like national night out. Um, the community events that take place. And and stuff like that, and there's an education to the students and the parents, again, that need us the most and trust us the least. That this is what policing is, policing is what the community wants, policing is what the community needs. It puts somebody in front of them that is not, you know, a arresting them, not in an authoritative role necessarily, and more of of bridging the gap with the community.
One of the things that um Cheryl had mentioned was the statewide statistics around uh chronic absenteeism. Um, isn't there a role for for, uh, maybe they don't understand what the role is for truancy or truancy officers in that circumstance? I mean, isn't there supposed to be a safety net to intervene there already, or is that one of the things we're missing?
I'm I'm going to answer that the best I can and Cheryl's probably going to correct me, so um. So truancy, there's there's paperwork that has to be done and identification of a student that's true, and then you have to reach out to the parents, you got to fill out paperwork, and the state of Connecticut has paperwork. And there's an idea that maybe they could meet with a social worker, we have a social worker that we have working with us. For uh hard time, our social workers, our our police department's social worker, she's going out on referral cases that we have that are either criminal in nature or somebody suffering from mental health. Not the truancy component, um, but the truancy is that they would meet with. The 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 parents or the students and figure out, I guess, what the what what's going on before there was reported to the requirements that they have to do. I I can say, and Cheryl needs to rehabilitate that, but um, I can say that, I asked the Youth Service Bureau directors that I was able to speak to and interrogate. Um, and they they said that a lot of times truancy came to them. Through an identification of another issue in a home, and when they reached out through mental health or some type of programming. Truancy came to 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 light through another program that why the kids weren't failing because of dysfunction or issues or problems in the home. And that became the issue, and I think, you know, there's a lot of reasons why truancy happens and why kids don't go to school, right, or can't get to school. Um, it it, can I hit the, can you, can you add to any of that?
And truancy is a little different than chronic absenteeism, so chronic absenteeism.
Okay.
Is when a child is absent for ten percent of the days of enrollment, so when that data was taken for from this year, so it's it's. It's based on how many days of enrollment have been in place as far as of November, so you figure. Um, by November, we have roughly twenty days of school per month, by November, two, four, six, it's about. Six days would make somebody, six to eight days would make a student chronically absent as of November, roughly, um. So if this child in November was absent six or more days, it would be considered chronically absent. Truancy, on the other hand, is when a child has. Four or more unexcused absences or chronic absenteeism is any kind of absence, whether it's excused, unexcused. Um, it's just that this child is not in school. Truancy is one of those absences, not been accused by a parent. Parent has the ability to excuse the first nine absences for whatever reason they need to excuse them for. Once they hit that tenth absence, you need a documented reason from a medical professional from the court. Or if there's an extenuating life circumstance like a severe illness or a death in a family. Um, so they're a little bit different as far as truancy and chronic absenteeism is. So like I said, in Sept- at the end of September, if your child has been absent for two days, they would be considered chronically absent at the end of September. By the end of the school year, when it plays out, once we've had a hundred and eighty school days, it's eighteen days, you're making child at the end of the year chronically absent. So that twenty-five percent that the state's seeing right now could turn around by the end of the year. Because we're dealing with lower number of numbers at the beginning of the year, but at the end of the day, we still have some high numbers. It is winter time too, so again, the state could turn things around at this point in the year. Um, but that's the difference, as far as truancy though, um, at one point in time, this was before I was an administrator. Um, truancy was handled through the court system, it is no longer handled through the court system, it's up to various. Of boards of education to have their own protocols in place to deal with truancy. Um, so that's how things have changed, and again, when I when I became an assistant principal, there was no court recourse when a child was truant. We had put into place, just as East Windsor has in place. Protocols to review student attendance, when we have, when students hit a certain number of absences. The the team decides, do we have a parent meeting, do we go out on a home visit, do we refer to DCF? Um, so we do have a protocol that we follow. Um, and having that Youth Services Bureau for attendance is really important to have another buffer to support that family before you have to call DCF. Um, so it's it's another support system that's in place, it's really important to have that, so in my past experience. Kind of different than um what some of the other youth services bureaus are reporting, that they came across the the absenteeism. As a byproduct of another mental health issue, we actually, in my past district, were more proactive. And we we brought the attendance concern first to the YSB, and they were have been able to tease out other mental health concerns. Um, from that referral, so it's been very helpful. Um, and in the in my past experience, I began as an assistant principal in twenty eighteen. Um, and in the district that I was in, we had before, before we had implemented our protocol with home visits. And parent meetings and the Youth Services Bureau, I want to say our our chronic absenteeism rate was about twenty percent, and I was able to bring it down to about eleven percent. By implementing home visits and parent meetings and youth services, so it really did make a difference. And then COVID hit, and so then it was all, you know, down the drainpipe, so.
Uh, so I have one last question, and and I think it's along the lines that you're um, you're alluding to, before I do that, I do just want to recognize. Deputy Chief, you've done a fantastic job of trying to untangle this and make it something functional, and you give a lot of credit to a lot of people at the beginning, but. A lot of credit is due to you as well, and I I think.
I I appreciate that, and I know by limitations, and that's why Cheryl and those folks that came here and, you know. I I hope some of it was like rambling, I I usually don't have as many notes as I do, because I I'm speaking about something I know about. I had to take a lot of notes and I had to get to where I got to, it it's really all credit to anything I did. It it's really to these guys, she she got up here and explained exactly the need, and if you can just take that part of the presentation over, I appreciate it. But understand that I will tell you that you have money and you can do this.
Well, and and so my my last question, actually along that line and and what I had just said, and then I'll I'll take it from anybody else, um, but. Um, so in the absence of um, a a fully functional, robust YSB presently here. How are we capturing the needs of 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 those families in the community or or are we missing stuff?
I I I believe we're missing stuff, and and I believe so, you have to have somebody with the skill sets, and and again. You have to have a skill set of the administrator, administrative core functions I'm talking about, but also the service thing, so. I can tell you that I can fill out the grants, I could tell you that I can write the budget, I don't, as long as Cheryl or somebody like Cheryl is going to spend the money in the right areas. Um, we can do that, it it's not a police function, it it, somebody's got to have that skill, but they also have to be able to reach the community, so if we don't have any of that. Melissa's programs that she does is tremendous, but doesn't touch a lot of this, and she simply can't. There's just not enough time in a day, I I can't say it enough, I keep talking about it, she only asked for a raise, well, I can't say enough of what she's doing, she. She's got three different functions and she's running to employee issues too, and she's covering those areas just like we are. But this town is is so lucky to have all the employees that work here, really, really are fantastic, she won, but we are missing, in my opinion, and I don't know if Cheryl would say that, we're missing some of these.
I think there are opportunities through this to support students. In very creative ways that we don't have in place right now, like I think, for example, you're talking about the JRB. Um, in my experience working with the JRB, it really did um, provide. Restorative educational um opportunities for students to learn from their mistakes and. Um, it was an opportunity for them to learn from their mistakes and learn that the the school and the police and the YSB work in tandem with each other. And that through that process, it also doesn't result in an infraction being on their permanent record too, so. Um, it gives a student a chance to make a mistake, to learn from it, hopefully. Um, and again, um, as Deputy Chief Carl said, their early intervention really is key. Um, so I I feel like we have some opportunities here to um get in front of some things that maybe we don't have the resources to do.
And 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 you know, the, like, again, to the to the programming, there there's programs out there that are funded, and so when I, when my name got out there as somebody that was in East Windsor that you could reach out to. We got, I got emails from organizations that were behavioral based. About encumbered money for East Windsor, hey, you've missed the deadline, but you have thirty-two hundred dollars you can spend on this. Uh, we're willing to send it to you, you just got to fill out the grant, and then another one, and then another one, and then, you know, eleven thousand dollars for the attorney general that sued uh. Cigarette company, uh, every municipality, it's eleven thousand dollars a year for different types of programs that you could do. All this money can be grabbed and it's parked and it's given back and tremendous amount of money, and then the matching funds for the last five years that. We didn't, we gave back money left on the table, those matching town funds were still, are still parked into an in an account. So like I said, for a while, there is funding, um, and and I don't think a lot of people can stand up here and say, well, I have all this money and I, but you've got to fix this need. It's just not, it it it's just something that the town is missing, it might be. Much like the community center, and much like a location like the community center, these teen centers were. You know, I I went around these places and they were amazing, like I said, e- even if it was just a pool table. And a ping pong table, there were kids in there having conversations, and when you have conversations, you bring those kids in and they can start to have adult conversation or conversations with adults. And you start to learn about things that are going on in their lives, it's tremendous, and we were missing that for.
I think like there's opportunity too, for a key piece of this is the parent education too. Um, because I always said it's a part of an intervening program, we have to involve the parent. Um, because as as parents, I'm a parent, you know, you don't know what you don't know, um, and you oftentimes learn from when you're, when your kid. Or they might make a misstep, but it's important to have that parental network in place. Um, and even, and something I was reading in in light of COVID. Those parent networks were not happening during lockdown and in the last few years, so our parents, especially parents of young children, did not have the opportunity to get together. And socialize their young children and to socialize themselves with new parents, but it's just important to support those new parents. Of young children as it is to support the older children who are in high school, there's a huge need and it's just, it's a great opportunity. Really to patch up some of the damage that COVID had done.
Uh, I'm a parent of an almost four-year-old, he was uh. About one year when COVID started and that socialization with other peers has not happened. Uh, and that's something that I keep waiting and I keep hoping for, and it's just not coming, um, so I I I recognize that.
Are there any other questions or comments from members of the board, and then I'll open it up to Charlie, let's start with you, so I don't forget, you want to lead off? You're good? Back, anybody else?
I just want to thank you both so much for the presentation, um, it covers a lot, a lot of information was shared and I really appreciate it. Um, and you addressed a lot of the questions that I had about truancy and the juvenile review board and stuff, but I hope that we can take the steps. As a community that are necessary to make this all it needs to be for the community, so thank you both.
Yeah, I just think absenteeism, I think those numbers are probably screwed a lot because of COVID. Um, because parents were told at the beginning, if anybody in the family had COVID, you had to quarantine for excess amount of days, and some parents. Thought it was fourteen days, when it got changed to five days, but I think some of that will correct itself. Um, but I think there's one. Um, but I think there's one other thing that we should take under consideration is when a child is sick and you try to make a doctor's appointments today. You're not getting in tomorrow. I'm not going to see you three days from now. If the kid has a stomach ache or has some vomiting on Monday. You can't get in to see the doctor on Thursday. By then your child is okay and you need a doctor's note. Some people can't afford to go to the doctors every time the kids have a stomach ache or they're not feeling well, but they can't send them to school either. So I just hope that those things are taken under consideration. And then with COVID and the lockdown, I know a lot of families at the beginning of the school year because of their work schedule and just getting back to work or knew they were going to go back to work. They used that as an opportunity to go on vacation, um, because they haven't been on one in years. Um, so when the world opened up, they wanted to get out there. Um, and I think that were some of the numbers now that COVID was over, that it's rise. Because I'm sure you have the same problem in East Windsor as all the town has with people taking, you know, some days to go on vacation. Um, because they stuck in the house for two years. Um, so hopefully those numbers will, will change moving forward. Um, but I think your points you're making about the need for one in this town is absolutely, um, necessary. Especially with the world changing out there. Um, so. I'll look to see where the money is.
I just wanted to have the conversation. Let's start having a conversation. Yeah.
And you're right, Betsy Burns did an excellent job with that juvenile review board, um, in turn several children whose town around. And we haven't had that opportunity in a long time for the board. So hopefully we can get that up and running again.
So thank you guys for this presentation. It was a real eye opener for me about the stuff that we could be doing, should be doing, aren't doing. Um, and I think we do need them. So I'm assuming, my question is, I'm assuming that this youth services bureau would be under Melissa? And that the money that you're talking about that we already have is from the matching funds?
Correct. And before I made that supplemental message that you can do it, it should be this, it should be that. I got permission from Melissa. I asked her, where do you think this would fall if I were to be able to convince these guys? And she said, well, it's a social service program. It's not a police program. It's not a police program. And could you do this if you had the help? And she acknowledged, yes.
So, and that was going to be my next question is if we were able to swing a youth services bureau director or whatever you want to have, whatever we decide the title would be, um, you know, under Melissa, does that person need somebody? There is, or are we talking about the bureau being that person being the paid member? And there's then a multi-disciplinary group between the school and the police department and local leaders that are now interfacing with that person?
So that, that's a really good question. I, I did talk to some, I know like for Winchester, um, the, the assault, the youth service, uh, bureau director, she was part of Winchester. She was full-time, only person with one van. She was able to build it to what it is right now. Uh, my conversation with Amy, uh, again, about where the money was and who was it, you know, she, there could be, there's enough of two, two part-time people. There's one part-time person. Do you have a, you have somebody that could, you know, lack a better term, push the paper and another person that do the programs that we just talked about. Um, it, it could be a full-time person depending on the skill set. If they had the skill sets to understand that they also were doing the budgets and also uh, reaching out to the community and not just do the programming. I suppose it would depend, but this is, that's a great question because this is exactly the conversation. You know, I wanted you guys to start having, uh, with Melissa, with Amy and with the police and with uh, members of whoever you have to answer. Is it, is it a one-part-time position? Is it two-part-time positions? Is it a full-time position? In the budget that I did this year and sort of had to fix last year. The money that comes from the Department of Children and Families, which is, it comes in, uh, matching, a matching enhancement and a, a basic one. Um, I, when I built the budget, worked with Amy and I earbarked thirty thousand dollars, uh, for salary. And then there was fringe benefits and then, and then up in addition to that and still running programs. Those are the funds that have been returned. The town matches those and they put part of it in. Amy can speak more intelligently about how much money is there because we had to spend, we had to take two years to get money back to DCF. Um, and it was from the money that we didn't spend. Uh, last year we had forty-four thousand dollars. We spent about fourteen hundred of it. And so there, there is some funding that is, that is there for that. And it would have to be, um, Melissa and other people from the school district to talk about more intelligently what they wanted to do, move forward and what programming. Would that be, would that look like two part-timers, one part-timer or would it look like a full-timer? If it's, if it's a part-timer and you found the right person, you could take that money and extend it further. At some point in a full-time position with salary range in the area somewhere between fifty-three and sixty something thousand dollars. If that was a full-time person, you want to be competitive in the market, at some point you would have to start to budget this. It would have to come to the town budget. But initially.
You could almost run a pilot number in.
Correct. Correct. And then I didn't touch on the fact that some youth service bureaus, when they start to get, when they get started. They attach themselves to other ones that are already existing. Uh, Jason had pointed out, I had a conversation with him, you know, we have a YMCA that's how far over our border in Arlington, right? They can, they have programming and things that they can do. Uh, our JRV, we, we might be able to attach to another JRV until we finally get these things up and running. There's some communities that, that mirror those too. Um, so there is steps that we can take to get going. We just have to have a conversation to see where we wanted to go. Uh, I have been basically the head of it for the last seven months. And I wanted to come before you guys to say, this is what's going on. This is the need. And I'm not the one to do it. Nobody in the police department is the one to do it. Shouldn't do it. It would be the point of contact. Well, I don't think you hear that too much because the police like to pick more everything, but, 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 but not this.
I have no comment.
That, that, um, that question and, and response actually does provide a nice segue into, uh, some of the things we'll be talking about in my budget proposal, um, for some restructuring that might make a little bit more sense. Um, but we're, we're sitting on, I think Amy said it was somewhere around ninety thousand dollars that was parked that could be used for, um, part-time staff people.
Right. That's part, that's, that's, uh, in addition to the forty-four thousand dollars that we've only spent two hundred bucks so far this year of the forty-four thousand dollars. And the multiple streams of programming from ample and behavioral organization, like here is the money, here is the money, here's the money. Uh, I have nobody to run these programs. There's, there's just, I don't, it's not endless, but it's, it's another, you know, ten, eleven, twelve, twenty thousand dollars. So we need to know who, where and how. Those are the things that we need in order to establish. And that kind of gets me to my next question. My, I, I think the microphone back. Um, it, you know, in the world, according to Matt Carl, what are our next three steps? I think this is what I was stuck on. Do we, do we set an advisory board? Do we get somebody in place or do we find, you know, obviously a location needed? I think you have to identify somebody that you want to hire and somebody that has the skill sets that can work with Cheryl in the school district. Primarily because of the students and the kids and the programs that she talks about. The JRV piece, we can fit in anytime, anywhere. The police department is capable of identifying and working through the JRV if we have community members to work with. Um, you, you can't have the police department make the arrest, be the judge, jury and, and follow through and everything. That's just not a formula that's going to work. Other members have to do that. So we are ready on the JRV side. We can tweak that very easily and get it up and running. It's just identification of the advisory board. I think you have a person in place and you start an advisory board. Some of the advisory board, I asked South Windsor specifically, um, they had two local leaders, they had an SRO. They had a couple of, um, members of the community. They had a board of education member. They had a school teacher and, but any, every, every single youth grows different. It's whoever we have in the entity. Certainly Melissa would have to have herself or staff on the advisory board. That advisory board would say, okay, this program is worthwhile. This one's out. Let's do this. Let's do this. There's a need here. I heard this, but when this broke, let's do that. The money's there to do that. It's just who's going to identify doing that. So I think a person, an advisory board, and then obviously a location. The location's a little bit more problematic because we don't have a recognizable easy access place for teens to go and multiple teams. It's not just like one, you know, room where they can start to learn how to lift weights and maybe make smart choices about eating and health. But, you know, we have people in this community that are, that have a lot of knowledge that can help the, the, the youth if we can find a location for them to go. Certainly in the winter months. Melissa does a great job at the rest department in the summer, but in the winter months, we roll up the sidewalks, everybody goes inside and then we identify all these problems. And there's no place for anybody to go. Right? So I'm not knocking the community and I'm not saying, you know, I'm just telling you, we have to have a solution upon location. Location is probably the last thing. We need to get things in place because we can partner up with other organizations, you know, and, and figure out places, spaces until we get there.
Are you comfortable with audience, audience question? Absolutely. Anybody in the audience have questions for Cheryl or for Deputy Chief? Yes, sir. Name and address.
Paul Ayers, the eighty-nine Main Street suburb. It's more of a conservation. DCF is a last resort, absolute last resort. If anybody's got a problem, that's the last place you want to be. But the reason is they're understaffed. They're under pressure because they absolutely have to make decisions and they do. Maybe not the best decision, but the more you can do locally, the fewer things they have to deal with and the better off everybody is. Because to me, DCF is a scary organization, but not necessarily in their core. They don't have the time and the resources to put into individual cases. They can't. But they have to do something. They're under an obligation from the state that yes, you will make decisions, make one. Some of them comes out nice to people where if we can do things locally, we change the rules completely. And then it's our community, the people live here. We don't want them to suffer. We want them to be successful. This is a major thing to be done. So that's my statement.
Thank you, sir.
Don Claskey, live in Merle. Cheryl, this is for you because I was involved with Safe Red with three teenagers. That's a fantastic program. I'm going to get the, it won in town. It, it is a big deal because those seniors have a ball. And I had three sons that went through it in another town and I was involved with all three teenagers, all three teenagers. It is a great, great thing because like you said, it's the last time to get the other of their buddies, their girlfriends or whatever. Before they go their separate ways or there's college or whatever. Safe Red is to me, that, that's a bonus. It's a real bonus.
Thank you.
Norrie Farmer, two forty-seven twelve Water Street. Um, it just was thanks to the conversation. It harkened me back to the days of my dear friend Betsy. Sitting with Betsy and for wanting this. Then Melissa wanted you and everybody wanted you, but we never get there. We just kind of, yep, yep, we got grants because money, we got us sitting there, but we can never seem to just get there. I think we need to get people from education, from the police, everybody that you're talking about. I think we need to make a group and say, we're going to get there. We're going to figure this out once and for all finally, because I hate to think about the amount of young people who have died, you know, from overdoses. We are not untouched by that. And and it really, I'm really very emotional about it because I remember sitting with Betsy. When I was the chairman of the board finding it's fifteen years ago saying, how do we get to here? And we've just never taken the last final steps to say, well, we don't have a place for it, but let's figure out where that face is. Is it a classroom that we borrow or something? Is it, it's time to get there. Thank you.
I agree. I agree with her.
It's, it's time.
Other comments or questions for the Deputy Chief?
Yes, sir. Randy Lipton, Southern Decree Trail. Uh, I've got a son that is an assistant principal in South, in South Windsor Middle School. And every day he's got a plan of what he's going to do when he gets, when he gets to school. That plan is thrown out the window as soon as he walks in and sits down. Because little Johnny just punched somebody in the face. So now he's got to go through all these, this thing, I've got to call this person, I've got to call this person, I've got to call that person. But there are things that, if, and even he says, if there was someone else we could, we can help, that could help with these kinds of situations, it would sure make life a lot easier. And, and we talked, we've been talking for quite a while about a community center and that's a perfect example of a way to use the community center. For the community, not just for, you know, a certain, you know, number of people. But there's a way we can use a community center to make our community better. And I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Other comments or questions for the Deputy Chief or Cheryl? Anybody online? I think we've lost most of the online.
Is that because of me? Jason?
Yes, sir.
I don't know where you live, Joe. They want to save our children, our future.
Yes.
And we need to do whatever we can to make it better for them. Because we're not going to be around for long. Adult people, but the kids are going to be around and let's leave something that they can be proud of and excel with.
Yeah.
That's something. So.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments?
Here's some, they might, just some examples. The property at Abbey Road, there are so much land down there that you can utilize for whether it's in, if, if it's an afternoon baseball league or, or a soccer league, whatever, you've got, you've got, I mean, you guys might bring kids, they actually live in Ellington, but they come over here and they use those deals. But I mean, there's so much opportunity on that crossroad land and Abbey Road is underutilized. Whether it really is, I mean, it's a, it's great. I mean, people don't, if you, for those of them, there's a beautiful walking trail over there on the pond. It's just, I mean, and the field to grow, I mean, it's, we really need Jason to get behind it and, and get it moving so that the community can use it more better, more useful.
Thank you, sir. Other comments, questions? Deputy Chief, thank you very much.
I'd be more than glad, even beyond this, if anybody in the community wants to reach out and have a conversation with me about the things and the benefits, um, know that, uh, I support it entirely. And I will go around and any talk groups, anybody who wants to talk about this, I'll do the best I can to educate them moving forward. And I'm persistent. You guys can do this. We can do it together. Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate all your passion, all you guys. Thank you very much.
I should buy a water. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you again very much. Um, all right. Next up is the discussion, the next step's opportunity to directly direct expanding rooms. So, um, you'll all recall, we got three of them, uh, one for the Trolley Museum for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. One for the School Hill Water Association for one point two million dollars and, uh, one for the, uh, uh, expansion and renovation of Scout Hall for two point seven five million dollars. Um, so with the Connecticut Trolley Museum, that funding is going to go directly to the Trolley Museum. Um, and it is earmarked for the, the purposes outlined in the law, actually all of them are outlined for the purposes outlined in the law. With the Trolley Museum, it's a direct corporation to them. They're going to work through the relevant federal agency. Um, and they're going to put it towards their map, the plan of transforming that into a living history. The other two, uh, require some action from us, um, in terms of what we do next. It's not necessarily action, um, this evening per se, um, but we'll start first with Connecticut with the, uh, School Hill Water Association. Um, so we got one point two million dollars for those folks for a project that's supposed to cost somewhere between one point six. Thank you very much, guys. One point six and one point seven million dollars. Um, we have previously, um, the, the five of us have previously committed our support to spending a quarter of a million dollars of our ARPA allocation, of which we have about two point four million dollars. Um, to to help bridge the impact on the residents for the remainder of that project. That still leaves them about uh, one point, about a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars short in terms of being able to accomplish that. Um, we have submitted a request for a community investment fund grant, which is state funded ARPA dollars to help close that gap entirely, which would actually have a cool way, turn that into a federal, state and local partnership. Um, which you don't see very often, the three levels of government, each contributing towards a solution.
You know when we hear back from that?
March sixth. Or 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 I read shortly thereabouts, they're telling us March sixth, so I would think, actually, last time they were right on, so I I think that's probably a real number. So we have not yet committed the uh, ARPA funds. In order to do that, we would have to go through the normal appropriations process, which would mean Board of Selectmen would need to approve it, the Board of Finance would need to approve it, and that would need to go to a town meeting because of the knowledge. Um, so I don't know if you guys are prepared or ready to do that yet. I will tell you that um, I have not been contacted by a a federal agency about the appropriations process and the way that appropriations process works. The funding is included for a specific purpose in the federal omnibus. Um, but that doesn't mean it's a direct appropriation in most cases. What they do is they, it it goes into an appropriation subcommittee that has uh, jurisdiction and cognizance over a particular federal department. Um, that department then reaches out at the direction of Congress to the recipient to explain what the processes, processes are. I saw a couple of emails in Senator Murphy's office to try and figure out who the recipient will be, whether it will be the School Hill folks directly or the town of East Windsor. I suspect it will be us because we were the applicant and the contact information, but I'm not sure of that. I also have not heard from any federal agency on that appropriation yet, so. Uh, now, the president only signed the thing twenty-two days ago, so it's not, they're not languishing by any stretch, but I don't know if you're prepared at this point in time to commit that that two fifty through the appropriations process or if you want me to get some clarification on what the additional requirements may be, whether it needs to be in um, environmental analysis or uh, plan review or whatever the case may be that that particular agency may require. I I don't know the answer to those things yet. I wanted you guys to know kind of where things stood and what needed to be done still to accomplish that and and that's kind of the tickback of sorts. We may not know, we may know by March sixth, the rest of the funding picture. Um, so I leave that to you guys for for discussions there.
I would say I would, I personally would like to wait until we know what the direction is gonna be. Um, but I would hate to err in any of our decisions, um, until we know exactly what we have to do and because it's me, until we actually have the money in our possession, I don't think we should do anything to add any money until. A hundred percent sure.
Oh, it's a hundred percent sure, it's federal law, that's.
But we haven't received it yet.
No, they can't, they can't renegate it. They they'd have to get the, they'd have to pass another budget for sending it, they're they're not.
But I still think we should wait until we get the direction. That's just my thing.
No, I agree, you know, in case we do need uh, to spend thirty thousand on some sort of study or research or engineering or in case we have to add a little bit more to the pot. Do it all in one shot, so I think we should wait till we find out what the stipulations.
Charlie?
Yeah, I agree with the two of them. Um, I I don't see a need to act right away. Um, whether we can wait and see if there's gonna be other expenses. Um, or hoops to jump through.
I agree with all this, since I we definitely should have clarification. If there's added expenses or additional requirements before, yeah, so yeah, I agree with everyone else.
Even if you have to push that conversation. Because every day goes by, we know that the cost of any project we do is gonna go up. Um, you read tonight's paper, Woods and Watts on their senior center in their police department. Um, right now they're five million dollars. Gonna be under budgeted, um, and they're looking at reducing the size of both of those projects to try to come in closer to that, so. Um, I wouldn't wanna sit on it forever because of that. Um, because we know what we think it's gonna cost for this project, but and each day goes by, that class, we know it's gonna go off, so.
Okay, so we'll sit tight on that. Congratulations, directed appropriation, number three is the two hundred, uh, two point seven five million dollars for uh, the Scout Hall renovation expansion project. Um, now, we do know some information about that because I have had uh, I've had several conversations with the United States Department of Agriculture, Culture, Rural Development Department. Um, and I I I do know what they are going to require. They're going to require um, an environmental review and an architectural review. Um, the architectural review, because we already have the spec book in hand, um, should be a pretty quick turnaround. We're talking weak step lines. Um, the environmental review would follow a similar timeline, um, although in explanation to them about the subject site. Um, it it would not be, it would be unlikely that there is a problem there because there's already disturbance, there's already building and and with the explanation, what the footprint would be, we didn't think that there would be an environmental concern, but they have to go through their processes in order to do it. But that's last in line. So the the two point seven five million is last in. We do still have one point two million in uh, capital non-recurring, which means we are, we need to come up with if we're going to move forward, and that's a question for you all to to apply hundreds if we wanna move forward. We have to come up with one million fifty thousand dollars and we have ways to do that, that don't involve um, additional tax dollars. If you guys wanna move forward with that, I'm happy to work with Amy over the next couple of weeks to put together some options. Um, so we can, you can have flushed out pros and cons of uh, what those uh, funding sources may be. Um, but I'm looking for some direction from you guys.
They get it together, let's, 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 let's go on that.
To your, to your concern about what's happening in Windsor, we are working with a professional estimator. We should have that uh, professional estimate number next week, uh, or by by the end of uh, January, I'm I'm sorry, so by our next meeting, we'll have it. Um, and that number is expected to hold for the remainder of the calendar year. Um, so the proliferation numbers that I've been privy to are encouraging. Um, but we'll have actually something with an estimator's signature on it for our next meeting.
Is the for this project, is the environmental review or the architectural review likely to cost us any significant amount of money?
Nothing. It's done, it's done by USDA.
Oh, so it's their side.
Our, our costs incurred would be the preparation of the plans. Um, so we've done that. Um, so we submit that to them and they effectively review the architectural uh, stuff along the same lines of the building official with for, you know, compliance with federal laws. Um, the uh, environmental stuff is gonna look at like uh, NBBB assessments, you know, impact on species of special concern. Probably the the soil types. Um, especially since you would see a probably soil types. But you know, if you just throw a GIS layer over the footprint, it's already there, you know, I mean, we're, there is not a lot of jeopardy. But um, for the next meeting, if if you guys are in agreeance, very agreement, um, I'll have planning options for the remaining one million fifty thousand dollars as well as the uh, estimators uh, signed estimate. Anybody have issue with that?
I don't have an issue with it. I mean, I've been behind it right from the beginning and after tonight's presentation with the police department and the school. Looking to work together, um, which is a great step in the right direction, work together, betterment of the town. Um, all the more reason why I'm still gonna stand behind my original vote and say, let's move it forward. Um, do whatever we have to do to get it accomplished, as Norrie Farmer said. It's been fifteen years since Betsy Burns talked about it and
Charlie, any thoughts?
Yeah, I'm, you know, still in favor of this project. I have been from the start. Um, I will question whether we're putting the cart before the horse here or you know, the townspeople did vote this down. Um, should we be looking at that avenue first before funding or does it matter which order we go in?
It does not matter the order you go in, and you need to ask them the question, so you need to have the answers to the question that you're going to put in front of them. How are you gonna pay for it is front and center. And if if it goes to the voters and the voters rejected, the voters rejected. You know, we can't just say we're, okay, fine, we're gonna do it. We can't spend the money without their approval.
Right.
No, I agree, we, we gotta, I'm still for this project and I think we uh, figure out a way to get it done.
I'm still in favor of it as well. I think that this federal money that we're receiving is a substantial amount and we should be so as a town grateful for that and I, any avenue that we can take to move it forward, there is a need in town for it. And I still think that there was a lot of confusion at the original vote with the Scenic Event Center and there's still a lot of talk online and I think that there was a lot of confusion as to what project was what. So I think I'm open to exploring, moving it forward still, yes.
Okay. Um, we're gonna come back to public participation in just a second. Actually, I think we're at public participation now, yeah.
As as Don and I and Johnny were were panicking uh, a lot of the community. We, one of the things that kind of upset us the most was people actually thought that the, that this community center was gonna kick the Boy Scouts out of 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 the Scout Hall and they were told that that was what's gonna happen, that we're gonna hit that. Now, you know, that one thing and then you know, the money, of course, is, you know, it's, it's, it's uh, it's gonna be, you know, ten times that around. But you know, that's something that you're never gonna uh, win a battle of. And then the, the, the other thing that was confusing was everybody was not everybody, I think that there, some people were thinking that that plot of land that we have up here, that's where it should be built, but when you look at that, that, that thing, we know it's gonna cost you know, let's say four million dollars just to put water in. And that's, and that's nothing. No, we don't have solar, we don't have electricity yet, we don't have a stick of the building yet. But you're gonna, you're gonna be looking at, you know, ten, twelve thousand, twelve million dollars on a, on a project like that. Whereas here we've got an opportunity to take something that is good and is vastly underused. The, the building is vastly underused. And now we can make it a community center where everybody can get good out of that building all day long. And I just think it's a no, no brainer.
Don Platter, Mockingbird, Sarah, you keyed on it. They were just so just doing the canvas. The misinformation out there was just mind boggling, I mean, totally mind boggling and you know, when you start talking to people and they go, oh, so it's not gonna be a budget, I says, no, it's online, I don't like issue. This is mine, it's coming from the omnibus.
My taxes are going up.
My taxes, you know, I'm not, and I had one neighbor, he said, well, what about that on the road? He says, I don't have a football. I can't tell you that, you know, the budget's gonna increase next year or the year after. Has nothing to do, I said, has nothing to do what we're doing right now, that's beside the point. Um, and as you keyed on it, the, the signs around town, um, were just incredible because of the Scenic Plan. Again, my offer to you is, if you read in the paper, Windsor Locks just downsized their senior center, if you saw it or not, because they don't have the money. And if you look at what they were planning and the money that they were going to expend, you could throw that into the factors about what would happen if they tried to force to use ride in in the reservoir road, like as we said, because you're dealing with three major items to to, even before you did a building. I mean, the land is, is one thing, but if you're gonna bring in water and sewer and the second thing, people don't realize, that's a, that's a, um, that's a corner lot. You don't have when you get building a corner lot, they, they take all two sides and they factor together. So A, you're bringing water and sewer, it's gonna cause you, you don't even know, but I'm gonna assume it's gonna be in the millions. And then secondly, and thirdly, you don't have the power, that's a hundred amp service in that town, not two hundred amp like we have at Scout Hall, one hundred amp, like I have in my house.
Yeah.
So you can't have a facility like that with a hundred amp service, it doesn't work, but then you have to re-bring in power and dealing with every source. God bless you, dealing with everything.
Don't give me.
Yeah, don't give me your breath, so, um, you know, having said that, folks, I just think that moving forward, we need to, for those who have a question side by side, this is what it would cost if you, you know, for those naysayers that wanna put it there on, you know, on reservoir and and right street versus what's already a structure and we're just adding on and making it better. And that relation, you know, alleviate some of that frustration that you were the, well, we should have done it this way, we should have done it that way. Cost is cost and that, and if you take out the apples. Abbey Road Scout Hall, when, you know, hands down.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Will you share the people's street? Is it possible to revisit this with the town? I mean, we're talking about, you know, buses and mines and Scout Hall. You know, have a, have a re-vote or whatever you gotta do.
Yes, there, there are several mechanisms available to do that. The first is through petition. Um, the second would be through the, uh, the board of selectmen can trigger any uh, question to go to a town meeting and recess it to a referendum, it's within our prerogatives to do that.
Now, part of the problem is, the science of, I just wanna bring this up quick. Okay, there was one sign off the North Road that said, do we wanna spend five million dollars on scanning? Well, they said, you know, they generalize, everybody thinks scanning is the Scout Hall.
Yeah.
And or the facility they were talking about, so, you know, a lot of the people coming up are thinking, you know, I don't want this neighbor who agrees, people messed up, they had no idea what they were voting for, I do believe. It was such a confusing thing, two things at the same time, totally different. Normally the same name, so I think that was part of what, you know, sway people vote. There were some people that did that on purpose too.
I know.
Make it confusing, that may work.
Sure, name and address, please.
Is a referendum necessary? Though the board has the power to do, to make this happen. Because you said we have the money. Taxes aren't gonna toll them. We, we don't need a referendum, it's not necessary.
If it's, if it's appropriate fund, a dollar amount of a million dollars that is required to go to a referendum for our charter. If it's an added appropriation or if it's an appropriation in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars but below a million dollars, it can be resolved in a town.
We're looking at more than the million.
Right now.
We have the money, we just need people.
Yes, permission. Yes, sir.
Paul Anderson, eighty-nine Main Street. We can't do this in a hurry. The signs are still out there saying, no, it totally pointless, but they're still out there and that will add to the confusion. Unfortunately, I'm just pointing it out to people in general that they're not taking their signs down, but they're useless today.
Your point is well taken. I think there is absolute cause for, for due diligence and we, I'm sure I can speak for the board when I say we plan on exercising that. Any other questions or comments?
Don Pledge, so thank you. Yeah, to the board, I understand this is troubling and you've been through this and but you know, uh, I do appreciate all that you do, this is not easy, but thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
But you can pay the big bucks.
Yes, sir. Tom Nasser, twenty-seven World Circle. Um, I think there is a combination of disinformation and confusion and then some people that are not believing what they're hearing. And just the fact that, um, I had mentioned to somebody on Facebook, how much would it cost to run water to a site? And they said, well, that can't possibly be, and I know you mentioned there's a quote from Connecticut Water.
They run November sixteenth for three point seven million.
So if we have those in hand, where, so I think we need to show those to people. Rather than say it would cost a lot of money.
Yeah.
I know it would cost a lot of money, but if we have something in hand to show.
Yeah, I know it would cost a lot of money, but if we have something in hand to show people. And I know we can't afford an architectural plan for, um, I don't know the name, is it the Coca property? Somebody called it, that's where it should be. I know we can't afford a, a, an architectural plan, but if someone could give us a quick estimate. You know, we're talking, it's gonna be a lot of money. Well, how much is it if we knew? From somebody reputable that said, yes, it would be at least twelve million to build something comparable on that site. And we all know it's gonna be more expensive, but these people don't believe it. So it'd be helpful if we had something. To show this.
Thanks, thanks for that.
Yeah. Any other public comment? See, none. We will have a, uh, an executive session. We'll just the five of us. Um, there will be no action following. Then we're looking to go to uh executive session at nine fourteen. There a second? Eight and second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're in executive session at nine fourteen PM. It's nine fifty, we're out of executive session, but no further business to come before the board of selectmen. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Second, motion's been made in second. It is non debatable. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
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 Opposed. We are adjourned at nine fifty.